Moving into the public hearing. For Sheffield ADU. TM number forty-three dash twelve A.
Thank you. Special exception twenty-three oh nine oh one. David and Donna Sheffield have requested a special exception for an accessory dwelling. For their property located at sixty Sheffield Lane, tax note number forty-three dash twelve A. Their property is twenty-three point three seven acres in size and zoned agricultural. The pro- the proposed accessory dwelling unit of twelve hundred square feet is for their son and his family to reside in on the property. V. Dot commented that they had no objections. The Health Department commented that they do not see any potential issues with the proposal. But they would need to obtain their will and subject permits if the permit is approved. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this application on October eighteenth. In which they recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero. And there are no proposed conditions associated with this application tonight. The applicants are here and present if the board has any questions for them.
Thank you.
I'd be remiss if I didn't point out. The fact that. This use is not permitted by right. In the zoning district, but. Pursuant to Rappahannock County Code one seventy forty-seven C, uses which would normally not be allowed in particular zoning district may be allowed by special permit or special exception because they impose conditions and restrictions on the use. In order to make it compatible, in some cases, the parcel may be of size or character that conditions might not be required. And that the burden is on the applicant to satisfy the requirements of the code, and that's pursuant to one seventy forty-seven G. Like to make sure that's in the record in cases comes back around, we end up in court.
I'm sure maybe would it be appropriate to maybe hear from the applicants to find out briefly what the. Big picture is here and what it is. Because we have a planning commission has heard it, we have. Just briefly. Thank you.
The man David Sheffield and as Michelle mentioned, this is for my son who's trying, wants to expand his family and his current home is not big enough for that. He doesn't want Blue Mountain blue. And we were talking it over and since he is said to inherit this property. That we thought it'd be best that he go ahead and build a house on it. And sticking with the provisions of twelve hundred square foot maximum living space, house will be within two hundred foot of our current residence. And I've already had, we've already had an approval test done. And. It's, we've been on this property for fifty-seven years, so there's no fear of us packing up and leaving anytime soon. And like I said, and when we're gone, it'll be his and the ideal scenario is that they'll have our house for our grandchildren to live in. And that's, and that's what our goal is.
Perfect.
Seems like the perfect story for.
Yeah, it is. It's a great story.
Any other questions for the app? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the Sheffield ADU. SE twenty-three dash oh nine dash oh one. Anyone wishing to speak with regards to this public hearing item only? Please be recognized and come up. Mr. Sheffield, you can sit down if you'd like.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak, speak, please be recognized. Not seeing any hands in the courtroom. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak with regards to this public hearing, please raise your Zoom hand. All right, not seeing any hands there. I will close the public hearing. And open it to the board.
It's pretty straightforward. I think I spoke with Mr. Sheffield, well, some months back now. About this and I think it's pretty straightforward. It's. Allowed in the zoning ordinance for this specific purpose, and I think. It's, it's met all the zoning requirements. So with that, I could motion to put forth to the board to prove this. Accessory dwelling unit as requested. With. Requirements specified in the staff report.
We had a similar experience at the planning commission with this application. Thought it really checked the three boxes that we needed to approve an ADU or to recommend a, recommend approval of an ADU. Less than twelve hundred square feet within two hundred square feet of the primary residence. And that it's using already the driveway at some points or exit. So there's no new roads needed. So it was, it was very. Easy to survey and, and see that this was a good fit. So I'll, I'll second the recommendation or the second, second approval.
We have a motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. You have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Thanks a lot. That's a great point to your family. Thank you.
Special exception twenty-three oh nine oh two. Ryan Alday has made application for a one bedroomed horse home for his property located at five ten Margie's Mountain Lane. Pursuant to one seventy thirty-six E and one seventy sixty-six K. This property is twelve point nine acres in size and it is zoned agricultural. The home is located on a private road and does not meet type two road standards. The applicant has proposed that if the permit is approved, then he would complete the upgrades necessary for the road to comply. I will note at the play, planning commission public hearing, the applicant did request that the road standards be waived. Currently, our code does not allow this provision to be waived. The road does access across an earthen dam. The Health Department commented that the existing dwelling is approved for only a one bedroom system. The V. Dot, of course, had no objections as this is a private lane. If the board was to consider approval of this request, staff would recommend the following conditions. A maximum of two guests, one bedroom, no food service to be offered to the renters of the facility. The permit terminates upon the sale or transfer of the property. The property may not be subleased, rented by third party or used as a timeshare. And that the road must be upgraded to meet type two road standards prior to the issuance of the permit. The access road routes over an earthen dam and through the emergency spillway for the dam. The applicant has suggested road improvements that will modify the emergency spillway. So as to meet type two road standards. Modification to the dam spillway over which the access road is routed shall be performed only after Virginia DCR. Permits are obtained with concurrents from the dam owners. If the impounding structure is not currently permitted through the Virginia DCR, it must be permitted or properly exempted prior to the issuance of the permit. The planning commission held their public hearing on October the eighteenth in which they recommended denial. Of this application due to the road not meeting the standards by a vote of seven to zero. And applicants here present.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not going to read those sections, but I'm going to reference the sections one seventy forty-seven C and one seventy forty-seven G is enumerated by me during the last public hearing. And she noted the applicant is here. I'm sure he will want to speak before.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, board. My name is Ryan Alday. I'm from Mobile, Alabama. I came to Virginia via my military service. I'm a veteran. I came to this part of Virginia via my fire service. I was a former professional firefighter in Prince William County. And I came to Rappahannock County to start a little farm with my family. Due to unfortunate events, I had to leave. The cabin that you see here and move closer to family. And I was left trying to find a way to not have to file bankruptcy or lose this property, which is why I'm applying for the permit here. And I guess the only, the real question that I was trying to get answered for myself is the type two road standard, why that standard is being applied. To this property, to my property here in, in particular. In which the, the neighborhood that, that you have to traverse through to get to my property. Doesn't a hundred percent meet that road standard and that neighborhood serves forty, thirty to forty homes. And the road leading to my home serves my property and one other property, this, the exact same type of cabin as that. So I just wanted to get some clarity, if you guys didn't mind, on why that stands such a high standard. That's the estimates I got was somewhere around fifty thousand dollars to bring that, my, essentially my driveway. Up to a standard this higher than the standard that serves a thirty plus home neighborhood.
I agree with one.
Historically. It's coming through Rappahannock Lakes to get to your property?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Three days, these orders. That's one of the reasons.
Okay.
Not that that's a very. Easy reason to swallow, but that's. That's one of the reasons that indicates the ordinance. That made this requirement.
Understood.
And then the tourist home requirement that you need to be on a main thoroughfare like. A public road will be or have a type two standard is because you're now asking for a commercial use for your private property.
A commercial use being defined as a certain number of vehicles per day, just a tourist home in general? So just a tourist home, so I understand is considered a commercial use?
It's not, it's not a by right use in a. In an acre conservation zone. So, but applying certain standards, you're basically trying to get that not by right use.
Understood.
In compliance with other by right uses in the same.
Understood. Is there any type of special consideration, given the fact that the use that I'm proposing would introduce less traffic than if a normal family lives there? So it would. We're talking mostly or primarily a weekend.
Decisions, determinations were made by the board supervisors when the code was adopted. And I, as my recollection from that period, which wasn't too long ago, had a lot to do with the fact that a. Residential situation where it's a thirty day rental or it's a long-term living situation, those individuals know very well the road, how to maneuver the road. In the light, in the dark, but in a commercial setting like a tourist home where you're renting out for a week or a weekend. You have individuals coming from the city. They're trying to figure out how to get across. Through a road that is substandard and, and that, I think, between that and then disagreements with people who share private roads. Led to the, the restriction being placed in the code.
Understood.
It was painfully, it was painfully discussed, trust me. And I remember at the time up where I lived, there was a tourist home that was on Route six twenty-two, but happened to be gravel, twelve feet wide. And that raised its own concerns, even though it was a state highway. Not, not paved, but a state highway. So I think Gary has summarized that quite well. Because at that time for that property. And you're competing, you deserve credit for making a credible argument. The same argument was made, hey, if. You're going to see less traffic than if, if we're converted if you're living there. That might or might not be true, but it. It is, you know, effectively a. A lodging facility that is unattended and so. You know, it might seem a little, a little. Overwrought and, and perhaps, but I think Mr. Frager also summarized well. Kind of some of the background why you could have that be faced with that requirement, but was leading in or not.
Yes, sir. I understood. It ma- it makes complete sense. I under- you know, I understand the logic behind it. What would you guys, is there any recommendation on? Steps moving forward there? Am I, am I stuck in, basically in the? In the fifty thousand dollar spend path to get this approved?
Your immediate option would be rent more than thirty days.
Okay.
So find a renter, but you did the due diligence and asked somebody, how much would it cost to get this road up?
Right.
You are in a part of our county that has had historical issues. With this very topic. So you're not the first one to be up here talking to voice and Mr. Frager understands this probably more than any of us.
Understood.
So.
Would it, would it be reasonable to, to, to ask that it get approved just pending the work? Is that something that is on the table? If the work, if I got the work done and brought the road to standard?
Yeah, the, the road is a requirement, right? And so permit could be issued with a condition as stated in the staff report that. A zoning permit will not be issued until the work is done. Typically in the code, there's a time limit for that to happen. If you don't make, take action within a year, then it'll revert back unless the longer period is set by the board.
Understood.
It's a lot of work to do for, I don't know how much revenue you're going to get and those are the reasons. Now, it might not only be a decision of that, and I can tell you that citizens came wanting. Tourist homes in Rappahannock Lakes and met a very tough. Discussion because of, you know, the roads there aren't great either, but they were deemed to meet at least the route in type two road.
Right, understood. Understood that. I'm happy with that. Just so I, the what I, what I was trying to circumvent would be if I look at the numbers and everything works out. And I wanted to move forward. I didn't have to start, restart this year long process over again to get to this point.
Certainly be wanting to try to.
Yeah, I would tell you just. My biggest concern is the image on the screen. That's the spillway for the dam. And you just can't throw culprits in there and still be a spillway for a dam.
Right, so I, I brought a. A professional, like someone that knows how to handle all that, where, where I got the, the estimates from. And this. I don't know how much backstory you guys have on this particular piece of property, but that, that seems to be owned by no one and no one's responsibility. So. Me, the past six months, even trying to find out who to speak to to say, hey, because it's just a right of way for me to get to my property. But to say, who owns this? So I can get your permission to upgrade it because that is a spillway for the lake and a family, whether it's. My family or a family that I put a tenant in there for thirty days or longer, they're going to be traversing that. And you can see that that's not to the standard that it, that it should be anyway.
So I can tell you from my, just personally for me, this is the exact kind of issue that makes these things very complicated. I'm sure somebody, somewhere, maybe not.
Somebody owns it.
There are his, there are pieces of property that nobody owns, but I bet somebody owns that.
Right, I actually went.
With the, with the planning commission process that you've already gone through, you had every single one. Say no for very clear reasons. And tonight I could not approve this without it having been done.
Correct.
Or reasons like this. I would never approve this application and say, okay, but you gotta get it done. My due diligence would be seeing it on, on, on the screen and saying, hey, it is done. It's just so many moving parts.
Understood, understood.
Are we going to have a public hearing?
We are.
I'm sorry, sir.
Is the right of way actually wide enough for you to put that type of road in?
The, the work that I would have to do, they would have to widen the road a little bit.
But is the right of way wide enough to accommodate the work?
So when I went to the records office to try to find all of that information, like who owned it and what the right of ways were, there's nothing here. That I, that I was able to track down.
So the right of way requirement for a type two that is constructed and not extendable is only twenty feet. It's very likely it exists.
There was a property was in the White's family. They sold it. It had a fifteen foot right. Hundred and fifty-seven acre.
That's good, probably for the horse cart.
Yeah. Here, if we don't have all that information, I mean, if, if I knew that, maybe I could vote. To, to approve a permit contingent upon the road being built later, but if we don't even know the right of way, which is, I don't see how we could do it.
Understood, yeah. I, I just, I hit a dead end. I, I had the people in the records, I spent probably an hour there and they were, they just couldn't find any information. It basically just jumps to. The name of the, the putman right of way, and that's really all it does. So I just hit a dead end trying to find that information.
Right, I do need to move us into the public hearing portion of this.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we'll come back and talk to you after that.
Sure, understood.
Thank you.
So at this time, I will open the public hearing for the holiday tourist home and who's their Atkins? I can see her.
I'm at Jackson District. Also the planning commission, we have some issues with. Tourist homes in subdivisions. And also at this hearing, we had a lot of citizens that showed up from the subdivision complaining about the issues of. Of strangers coming into their area, stopping at all times tonight, asking where is this place and that place. And these subdivisions are raising families. They have, they have young kids. So. I, as one of the members of the planning commission, we have a lot of issues with approving. Tourist homes in subdivision and Rappahannock Lakes is a subdivision along with, with Justin Gaff.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Not seeing any hands in the courtroom. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak on this public hearing? All right, not seeing any hands, I will close the public hearing and open it up to the board.
I did want to discuss, as Mr. Atkins mentioned, there was a lot of public feedback. At the planning commission level, and I think we probably had. Six or seven people, maybe more come and speak against this application. And I'm really surprised that there's no one here to speak tonight against this application. Because the, the outcry was unanimous and strong that this was not a safe. Place to have an Airbnb. And that it had been previously rented for high capacity of people. Stay, I, I don't remember exactly offhand, but I think it was. Ten to fourteen people. I have a bit of listing at the time. It was a very high use Airbnb and it's not very many rooms or much space at all. And so you had not just one family coming out for the weekend, but multiple cardless of people coming to cross. That image that you just saw on the screen. And it sounded like on more than one occasion, the neighbors had had to come to the rescue of folks that got stuck trying to get to the Airbnb. I don't mean to speak too strongly because I do empathize with the applicant and his story. But something like this, where you have people coming to your front door. Looking for an Airbnb, people getting stuck that you're having to fish out, people that you don't know, wondering all through your private neighborhood essentially. It's a nuisance. It's a nuisance. And it's very obvious to me. That the cure for the problem for this applicant, who is a very nice man, clearly caught in a terrible situation that none of us would want to be in. This is a long-term rental. It may not be easy, fast money like Airbnb is. But it's the right thing to do for this house in this location. And we sorely need the long-term rentals. And people want neighbors, not tourists in the houses around them. And I thank you very much for your application. I think, you know, I speak from my heart in terms of the public safety of people that come to stay at these Airbnbs. If I have a road access like this or bedrooms in downstairs areas without. Ways to exit the house and they found a fire, it's very dangerous. And we've had occasions in this county where people have had bad fires on poor driveways and it does not end well. So I, I, I think we at the planning commission found this entry to be insurmountable. In recommending a, in our ability to recommend approval. So we had to recommend denial of this application. And as the applicant has sort of revealed, there doesn't seem to really be a, a way at hand for him to remedy this issue. So that played into it as well. But we did hear extensively from neighbors about the way this high traffic Airbnb. Had impacted their quality of life.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
No, I. I really, I really appreciate what you're trying to do and. That kind of pressure is not fun. And. After listening to your story, of course, I thought, well, maybe there's a way here. But I obviously am surrounded by very thoughtful colleagues who are more analytical than me and appropriately less emotional than me. So. You know, they've kind of steered me back to this notion that it probably isn't. A great use that, that would allow us to fulfill our primary obligation, which is the, the health and the safety. Of our community. And I, I should also tell you that I'm generally not in a short-term rental. Supporter, trust me, not even close. So for me to even think about your story in this context and consider. The possibility of you doing that, at least from, from where I sit is unusual. My colleagues, I think, have, have in the last five minutes sort of shaped my thinking on this. And I just, I hate to. I hate to look at you straight in the eye and say, I have to agree with them, but I think they've articulated it really well. And I hope you can hang out of that beautiful cabin because I'm sure it brings you a lot of joy.
I just want to say pretty much what Mr. Whitson did. I first thought, sure. First of all, thank you very much for your service and your first responder work that you do. Appreciate that. But. We have heard from the citizens of Rappahannock County on so many occasions about tourist homes and concern for the neighborhood and. This road is definitely scary, probably on a good day. The thirty day or more rental is something this county needs drastically. I mean, their. Rentals go up one day and down the next because people need them so badly out here. So if that's even an option for you. That will be my suggestion. You try to go that route. I hate for you to lose the cabin, but the tourist home I just can't support.
Understood.
No other, or Mr. Frager?
I, I was going to say, I mean, if, if. I did entertain the thought briefly that maybe we could give you a permit contingent upon getting the road fixed, but I'm looking at. Sixty thousand dollars worth of work to do the road and the dam. And really, I don't think we should. We should do that until we have more information. We, we would need to know if the road, if you even have enough width on the right of way to do it to start with. So I, I've seen fifteen foot right of ways, which wouldn't allow you to build a tight road anyway.
Is there any suggestion on how I could get that information?
You're going to have to have a title search.
Yeah. A title, a title search?
Yeah, title search. Somewhere, somebody knows how, how wide that road to there is. Send, or you have to be involved with to get it fixed. That's. You need to do that. Before I think this board approves something contingent upon the road being fixed. Because if you can't do it, then we went out on a limb. And we shouldn't do that. And neither should we require you to build a sixty thousand dollar road before we even entertain the idea of it.
Right. Yeah, that, that's, that's just the thing I was trying to do is avoid spending any money on that and just see if it was something that the county even supported before I went down that road. spending any money on that and just see if it was something that the county even supported before I went down that road.
Yeah, but that would be a very, very disastrous thing, I'm sure financially to require you to build. And then he'll say no.
Right, exactly.
And it might be the shame of it if you'd be building a sixty thousand dollar road, that would be somebody else's road, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Such as I. I know if it's doable, and maybe the board can can grant it, but I wouldn't be able to make a motion or vote for it now.
Understood. So the the recommended route is to clarify what the right of way is and then restart the process over?
Or we could table that.
Yeah, it's once a once a time limit. These are not inexpensive application either.
Yeah, it was like seven hundred.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty days after it first appears on your agenda. Um, there's, you know, big questions at play here and um um I've you know, an option uh could be a withdrawal. Um, if if you didn't, if it's denied, he's time barred for a year from reapplying. If it's withdrawn, then get things straight, you could reapply right away. Uh, once a motion, you know, if a motion's acted on, that's that option's gone.
Understood.
And I wouldn't suggest any particular route. You know, this option, but you you do have a hundred and twenty eight days to make a decision on this. Public hearing's open and closed, and you just have to make sure you make that decision with them.
Are you speaking to me? I have a hundred and twenty days?
The Board of Supervisors says a hundred and twenty days to make a decision on this application now that it's been before them. According to their own rules.
If we table it for sixty or ninety days, would you be able to say that you would find the information one one way or the other?
I I'll do my best. Like, the only option I would have would be to hire someone, an attorney maybe, to do that work, because, like I said, the records office, they they just hit a dead end.
It wouldn't have to be an attorney, but somebody who does title searches, a company.
Yes, sir.
Which might be a lawyer, but
Right.
And and I mean, that's in Amosville, it's in Jackson District, and then
Yes, sir.
that part of the county, that side of two eleven, I've seen fifteen and twenty five ride deals.
Okay. And I can do that.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry. The other thing is this, um I I hear your story and the thing that is tough about this county is is that it's an agricultural county, and we have struggled with turning these ag homes and places into commercial uses. I do not want to give you false hope from me that if you go and figure out you can do this, that this is gonna happen. We've got neighbors that do do not want this and are vocal about that. And part of our job is to make sure that our community has health and safety first and foremost, and that's part of this process.
I understand. I also think seeking the truth is part of this process too, and a lot of that six people that were here were out here spewing a bunch of emotions and not a whole lot of truth, even some of the things that Ms. Smith said were were inaccurate, like the not having access to the the basement. You said that at the last meeting, and you said it again here, and that's not the case. That basement has two exterior doors and two exterior windows.
Correct, but we have had that application before where they didn't have any access.
I understand, but that's that's not my application.
Tonight, but I didn't mention it specific to your application. But if we do see applications that have those sort of unsafe histories, makes me very leery of voting in favor of them because of the way that they have operated in the past.
No, I I understand completely.
Time that other property, it was rejected by an interbody.
This property?
The B the uh the BCA rejected the other application that had sleeping rooms in the basement.
Oh, okay, understood. Yeah, I mean, I'm a firefighter, so I know the codes down there, so it meets all the code. It's just the way you said it in relation to my case makes people think you're talking about mine. That's all.
But I just wanted to finish and say that I didn't want to give you false hope that this would really materialize. I mean, it's a very tricky situation on these right of ways. And um so if if that were to happen tonight for instance, tabling or withdrawal, I just want to give you from my point of view that I see this application and has a lot of things going against it. Which we've and we've we've seen in the county in the past five, six years, we just looked at the table of this, a lot of applications for tourist homes, and some come in and there's more of a bright line.
Right.
That that's gonna work. And to Ms. Smith's point, um, this one was very tricky.
Yeah, unfortunately, I that wasn't my plan when I bought it. Otherwise, this wouldn't even be a discussion. So I I understand completely, like I, trust me, I I'm feeling the pressure of jumping through, having to jump through all those hoops, and you know, at some point, I'm just trying to kind of get information so I can make the best decision of of what to do forward. And that's at the end of the day, that's just what it comes down to, is the information that I have, what's gonna be the best, the best route. That's all. You know, so if 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 tabling it and I can find that information, if if I do all of that and then the majority of the board says we're still gonna deny it, I would rather just have that information now so I I don't waste that additional time and that additional money.
I'm happy to vote on this tonight.
All all it would be is delay, i- if it's not certain, then it's just delayed, you know, exactly, exactly. I don't want to do that.
Again, it's like I'd see what you're doing.
So a motion to table, approve or denies uh would be appropriate.
I would just want to mention to my fellow board members that I I did uh bring up at the planning commission as as we have brought up to folks that live in Rapid Lake Lakes before, that the best way for them to handle this kind of situation, which you don't live in Rapid Lake Lakes proper, you're on the far side of Rapid Lake Lakes, if I understand correctly. You're not in the HOA.
Um, no, I'm not part of the neighborhood. You just have to travel through to get to my property. Yes, ma'am.
For the folks that live uh in Rapid Lake Lakes proper and and do not want to have tourist homes in their subdivision that through their HOA uh or their other organizations that they have rules in place that prohibit them and that will keep that out of their neighborhood, um which is what they're after ultimately.
From what I'm hearing, it's greater than thirty day rental would be much more likely to happen than what you're asking for today.
I'm definitely leaning to the same conclusion that you are.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll put forth the motion that we deny the application.
And I'll second that that motion.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Hey, ma'am, I appreciate I I appreciate your support. I appreciate it, really. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope you turn it into a lovely long term rental.
Alright, moving into the public hearing for FY twenty twenty four amended budget.
State code requires localities to hold a budget public hearing when amendments to the annual budget through supplemental appropriations exceed one percent of the adopted budget. The cumulative sum of previous and proposed supplemental appropriations will exceed the one percent limit associated with the fiscal twenty four budget adopted on April twenty fourth, for which the required public hearing was held on April seventeenth. As such, a budget amendment public hearing was advertised in the Rapid News, and that's what this is intended to be tonight. Detailed accounting of all the proposed budget um adjustments and appropriation changes is shown in the attachments to your agenda item. Together, the amendments to the authorized fiscal twenty four budget and appropriations total one point two million or two point seven percent of the budget adopted in April, plus the carryover budget authorized by the original appropriation resolution adopted in June twenty twenty three. Gary, if you wouldn't mind scrolling down just a little bit so we can see that that whole table.
Is he on, is the um total authorized budget against which the one is the is the total authorized budget number in aggregate form against which the one percent change is calculated? Is I um am I correct that that is not net of transfers?
You're correct, that's not net of transfers. So the total authorized um budget and appropriation to date that the one percent applies to is the forty four point eight million dollars that's shown here on this table.
And what's the um what is state code required? Is the one percent measured against a locality's budget, not net of transfers, or is it?
I don't think it says either way, you have to we have to pick one or the other.
Right.
Okay.
And so since we budget not net of transfers, we budget including the transfers, then the one percent is on that same basis. Um, so all previously approved supplemental appropriations, July through November, by this board total four hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars, the details of which have been uh provided during those meetings for the board's decision making. And then tonight, the um the three additional proposed amendments are a seven hundred and sixty two thousand dollar adjustment for Rapid Public Schools true up of appropriations for additional uh and carryover state and federal funds. Uh, those are largely dealing with a grant that they received for um teacher wellness. Also, some additional state funding stemming from the finalization of the state budget in September and some additional federal funding related to uh free and reduced lunch. And as you are likely um aware, this year, there is free redu- free lunch um for all students, and this this adjustment represents uh the additional funding associated with that from the federal government. There is also in your packet a net zero dollar correction, um adjusting a prior adjustment that was made for purchase and installation of battery backup unit of a battery backup unit for the RCES bidirectional amplifier. That adjustment was approved on September sixth um and was budgeted in the general fund. In fact, that should have been budgeted in the capital projects fund. So this adjustment is a net zero adjustment between those two funds. And then finally, you'll recall that on November sixth, you authorized um a two percent salary increase effective December one and um largely tied to the state's final budget, and that adjustment is twenty thousand five hundred and thirty five dollars um added to the funding that was already available within the compensation adjustment. So the total of those, again, adds to one point two million dollars as the adjustment to the total authorized budget and appropriations. Um, that one point two million dollars is funded by about one million dollars in revenue other than the general fund balance and a hundred and sixty two thousand dollars that is the general fund balance um allocation. Forty seven thousand dollars of that use of the general fund balance, you'll recall, was already approved and is ongoing costs for additional county um Commonwealth's attorney staff, and the remaining one hundred and fifteen thousand dollar use of fund balance is one time. So with that, I'll take any questions the board has and ask that you please open the public hearing after that.
Could you be able to go through that again?
Is that the last time ever?
I could have predicted that.
Kind of expected, right?
Yeah.
So you're saying I took too long, right?
No, no.
Frasier, that's a
There's a long story behind that one.
I'm going to put it in the minutes.
Good.
Mr. Fraser asked Ms. Jewel to repeat it. It's amazing.
Any discussion for Ms. Jewel?
Yeah, um I was trying to catch up with you. You don't talk as fast as Ms. Summers, but pretty close because Jewel Owl is that direction toward the land of fast, fast talkers. So you're kind of in between the speed of talking here and there. But um your your command of the details is really great, and we are so happy to have you on our county's team. So let me let me say that.
Thank you.
Really grateful. Um could you go back to, and I was just poking around in our packet, trying to catch up on some of the details? Um, for example, on the um Commonwealth's Attorney Office. Um, could you, could you just walk me through that number again?
Yes.
And I don't want to, I know everyone is here for other things. I don't want to belabor this, but.
Yes, so the the Commonwealth's Attorney information is, um, that was an item that was approved back in August. Um, the board allocated forty seven thousand dollars of the general fund balance
Oh, I got it now.
For two, uh, excuse me, for one additional position in that office. And that is um that that use of fund balance is going to be an ongoing use of fund balance.
Okay, that's like you like the great radar O'Reilly on MASH, you knew what I was gonna ask before I asked it. Um, okay, so that that is recur- that will be recurring because it's basically a baseline wage increase for that department.
Yes, sir.
Period, okay. I can tell nobody wants me to go through all this, so that was that was the one question that jumped out. I just want to be reminded of those details. So it's um, you mentioned forty seven thousand dollars?
Yes.
And I'm can you walk in in that Excel file? Can you point me to that number? I'm looking at the the detail.
Summary.
It's a ge- general ledger detail, and I see, like, I'm in Commonwealth's Attorney.
Oh.
You're looking at the actual budget?
Yeah, shouldn't, aren't the adjustments detailed?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I see, I'm just trying to understand the math and then I'm comfortable, but I just I need to see one example so I understand I'm reading it correctly, because I see the net change is fifty one thousand.
So I don't have very good eyesight at this time of night. My contacts are world-class, so I have to go up here.
I see twenty, an additional twenty seven thousand and then
So the total changes um in the Commonwealth's Attorney's budget is fifty one thousand.
Okay.
At the bottom.
Yeah.
Um, forty seven thousand dollars of that is related to um the change that was made back in August.
Okay.
The largest piece of that is here in the salaries and wages line item, twenty seven twenties.
And health insurance.
Some portion of the twenty seven thousand.
Okay.
And then the FICA, the VRS, life insurance, health insurance, would have been related to that as well.
So you called out the forty seven thousand just to make the point that that
Wealth is the two percent for the state.
Okay.
Increased state rates.
Got it, thank you. Alright. Okay. Thank you.
Discussion before we
Incredible amount of detail for a little table right here that funnels into that table.
I appreciate all the information.
Yeah. No, it's um, I have to say that um between our our treasurer and and our county administration team are I mean, I just feel very strongly that you're all doing a fantastic job managing our finances and
Thank you.
People really need to know that. Um, if I don't want to jump in, but I'm going to, just to see if we can get going here.
Um, after we have the public hearing?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, let's have a public hearing. Thanks.
Can we go ahead and go to that? Alright.
You think I know the process.
Thank you. Um, sometimes we get into discussion before the public hearing. Alright, so at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for the FY twenty twenty four amended budget. Anyone wishing to speak with regards to this uh issue or this topic, please be recognized and come up and give us your name and district. Not seeing any, oops, yeah, there we go.
Just jump up and agree with Mr. Whitson. That was incredibly impressive. I didn't come for that, but I would agree that it sounds like we're in good hands in management of our finances. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say we're not gonna call on you to help us with the financial math.
Anyone else in the courtroom? Not seeing any hands. Is there anyone on Zoom wishing to speak to the twenty twenty four amended budget? Not seeing any hands on Zoom. I will close uh the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion um first of two. Um, and it's a motion to adopt the amended budget resolution as it's presented.
Well, second.
You have a motion and a second?
Should be a roll call vote, I think.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, it is a roll call vote. Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
Mr. Carney.
Aye.
And I also.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'll put forward Uh, Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion to adopt the amended appropriation resolution that goes part and parcel with the earlier budget resolution.
Well, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Another roll call vote. Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you.
Thanks for all your work.
Yeah, thank you very much.
No, y'all gotta stay.
All right, moving right along. Let's see, okay, we are now on to the Berkeley Group, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
You most definitely do not need to stay.
Put some, put some saline in those eyes before you travel, okay? Thank you.
All right. Jumping all around here. Uh, as board members recall, you had your joint meeting with the Planning Commission a few weeks ago and uh had some preliminary discussions about the Berkeley Group, Phase One of the zoning ordinance review and rewrite. And just a, as a high level reminder, the Phase One was intended to shift things around in the ordinance and then uh seek to improve the processes relative to applications and uh how matters are handled by the board, as opposed to change who, as I've said before, who is allowed to do what where. That's reserved for a future um, future phase, if you will. If uh you find success with this first phase, you move on to those others and begin to look at whether the types of uses you have in your use table are appropriate and the standards required for those uses are appropriate and where you can do them, future phase. So this is really about uh, can you develop an ordinance that improves what you have today to help citizens better understand what they can do, where they can do it, and how they go about asking for approval to do it? Whether it's by right through the zoning administrator or through a, a special exception through the Board of Supervisors or maybe a variance uh is the case might be if, if those two routes aren't available to them. So as was pointed out during the joint meeting and uh here today during public comment, this is a lot. Um, and um, one of the most important things I want to convey uh in my, or ask, staff ask to the board is that uh you do work through this methodically and you make sure the citizens understand that it's not the intent to, to rush to the end. It's really, the process is important in doing that gradually in a way that the public um is cheerleading rather than being worried they're missing something. And, and so that's gonna take some time. Uh, and so my comments in the narrative here uh are that, relative to an incremental step is that um, I think there are some really high level things that we need to kick back to the Berkeley Group and say, here's the first pass, hundred thousand foot level. You need to work on these things and, and then spit this back to us so we can really begin to have some constructive discussion with yourselves and the community, whether that be at some work session or however you want to do it, chapter by chapter or uh however you want to do it, but you really need to get that first step out of the way in, in uh my opinion. So to facilitate that, um Michelle and I have gone through the document and just made margin comments in the track changes document that was, that provided by the Berkeley Group for the four articles that are seeing significant change as a, in addition to things moving around. And I'm happy to go through those margin comments. They hit on the topics that you talked about in, in many respects, you talked about in your joint meeting that were important. So if that's okay with the board, I'll do that. Starting with Article One.
Okay.
If I can see, can't see with or without my glasses, depending on what I'm looking at.
I think it's underwater.
It might be, might be truer than you think. Uh, so first off, uh, um, the, the Berkeley Group, when they um moved things around, they recodified things into a different structure, the article in section one hyphen one hyphen one. And that's, uh, we need this to be consistent with our codification process we have now with our county code. Right? Zoning is chapter one seventy, and then from there on down, we do have different articles, but we still keep various sections, one seventy dash one, one seventy dash two, one seventy dash three. And then within that, we have letters and numbers and cascading down. So the first overall comment is, you need to go back and codify this the way our current code is codified. So we're definitely not gonna do that for them. That's what their job is.
So let me ask you the obvious question. Would we have an opport, I mean, God forbid that we would ever refer our zoning ordinance as anything other than section one seventy. But is, is there ever any reason why we would?
Yeah, some localities don't have their zoning subdivision ordinance codified in with the rest. It's an appendix or something like that. Uh, we chose to do that. It was, it was, this version of the ordinance was adopted in nineteen eighty-six, December of eighty-six, but it was codified then as separate, not like this, not with the one seventy dash and all that. And that came sometime later. I'm not sure.
Exactly.
Ninety-six? It's the same ordinance, but they just kind of moved things around and changed the numbering scheme.
And so now it's, it falls within our overall county ordinances?
Entire code is set up with that structure.
Okay, yeah, so we're, that's the answer I needed.
So then, following along with uh, with that, throughout this document, they've changed the wording of um inter, administering the chapter and changing it to ordinance, which that's fine. But the way your, your whole code is codified, they are codified as chapters. Chapter one seventy, and there's no reason, if we're gonna codify that way, why we can't say chapter as opposed to ordinance, then that's just a change that doesn't have to happen. So I just want to reiterate that there's no intent here that this is all the issues that need to be addressed, but these were the first pass of things that I think, if we can get these taken care of, then we can really begin to peel back and look at the details. This is just a section in the interpretation of zoning district boundaries where um the Berkeley Group suggested splitting a paragraph in half and display it in two places, uh here and on the next page. But when they did that, they left both parts in one spot and half of it in another spot. So just pointing out that um, they need to go back and clean that up. So there's, our current ordinance says where district boundary line is, or what they've added, where a district boundary line is appearing on the official zoning map divides a lot, which is a single ownership at the time of this enact, enactment, the use classification of the larger portion may, on rezoning application, be extended to the remainder by the Board of Supervisors. You don't have to say that. Anybody can apply to do that anytime and you don't need words in the ordinance to say they're allowed to do that. If you're going to put something in the ordinance, which there are some other sections that talk about, if, if a zoning line for our CRAN maps is kind of within fifty feet of a property line, then the zoning administrator can make certain interpretations of where it is. Uh, but you don't need ordinance of authorization to allow somebody to apply for rezoning. They can apply for rezoning anytime they want. Uh, so I just thought that was redundant. This is a kind of standard language that came out of the Fairfax or wherever. And so if we're gonna get in here, maybe we should stop talking about railroad tracks in Rappahannock County and uh make people think that this is actually our ordinance and not just somebody else's ordinance. And then, you know, maybe rights away should be considered, something they can think about. So where district boundaries are indicated approximately following the lot lines, which I was just talking about, where other parcels are record and the distance by scale is not more than fifty feet away, such lot or parcel lines shall be deemed to be uh the district bound. So um, there is this parenthetical question that said, you know, maybe you want to get rid of this and just have the line be the line be the line and somebody can get a rez, do a rezoning. But you've seen our maps, the line on the map could be fifty feet wide, maybe. Yeah, exactly. So I think it's important to have this remained to allow that, a little bit of flexibility interpretation. Uh, and then if we ever do improve our maps, that's a time when maybe that could come out. So within, anytime we adopt a new zoning ordinance, we're setting a new point in time, like we had the eighty-six zoning ordinance, and that sets the, the, kind of the time stance stamp for non-conforming uses. So things that might be allowed today that are being taken away with the new ordinance, although that's not really happening here because we're just explaining how you can do things. Uh, but what they've done in this ordinance throughout is they've said use the words effective date and then put the date like fifty times. And so my suggestion is maybe we define in the section that says effective date, what effective date is, and then just say the words effective date throughout rather than having the date show up fifty times. Um, so this section is regarding uh what a complete application is. It goes through zoning and text and map amendments, proffers for zoning map amendments for, with their conditional zoning, special exceptions, no longer talking about special use permits, variances, and then subdivision plaids. And the point is, this does, that doesn't belong in the zoning ordinance. That needs to be in subdivision ordinance. They've introduced the concept, um vesting versus non-conforming. And so Michelle points out that we need a little bit better explanation of what the difference is and the definitions of that term. That's it in Article One. So I'm confident that by the time we get to the end of the process, there'll be many, many other changes to Article One. Uh, but as a starting point, this seemed like a good place to start.
Good. And in terms of actions, and I, I know there are four articles are, so all four articles, to be clear, that have the, that have the track changes and red line comments, those are all pulled into Phase One of the project.
The entire ordinance is part of Phase One. It's just the other articles really are just shifting things around.
Okay.
Uh, this is, these are the four articles that had significant changes.
Okay.
It sounds like we're gonna have a joint meeting in January with Planning Commission, I think. I think that would be a great time to walk through this.
I'm happy to do whatever the board wants to do. I just want to make sure you have the information.
And you talked last time about the fear, not fear, but the concern, we need to keep the ball rolling with Berkeley Group so we don't lose our place. Where, where are we?
I did have a conversation with Rebecca Cobb about that. She, she called me and said, hey, what's going on?
Well, tell her she's not assigned to us anymore, so it's not moving.
She and Chris are, yeah.
Yeah, she's not in the day-to-day work anymore, though. We're, we've got Chris in the day-to-day work.
Probably, probably Chris said, I don't know, these guys aren't responding to me. Um, and so her, his boss reached out to me and I said, well, you know, we want to make sure this is a methodical process. And uh she said, they are, um, they are planning for future work. Um, and they need to know where we fit in. Are we, um, you know, at what pace are we going to be working on this? They're looking to bring work on for quarter, Q one. And so, you know, are they booking themselves full up? Are we gonna be moving on to Phase Two? When are we gonna do that? When are we gonna get back to them on Phase One? And so, you know, I held them off the best I could uh to, and explained that, you know, it is a process and we need to have this. And what, what we ultimately decided or discussed is that maybe we can get these preliminary comments. And I told her, I don't think it makes any sense for me to give them to you yet um because they need to kind of be vetted. And she agreed, but get that through. And maybe the next stop is uh something that they recommended early on, which was some um dedicated public um input session where they can be available for Q and A back and forth from citizens to make sure they hear those concerns on Phase One. And it's gonna be difficult to manage some people's thoughts because, you know, we want to fix all the other things that we want to fix. But to keep people focused on Phase One is really the reorganization and processes. And so she thought maybe that would be a good idea to have something like that happen. So I said, I will get back to you.
So by, assuming we get through these four sections tonight, it would be moving the ball forward a little bit if we then sent these off to them? Is that, is that?
Yeah, I think there's, there's a bit of work for them to do and some, some of these are minor comments, but other are pretty big things, like, you know, time limits on uh special exceptions, the things that we're saying. Yes, include this as it is now, include it in the future, recodify it and, you know, do these, uh do major and minor site plans.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Do, do all these things that we talked about the other day.
Yeah.
And then give it back to us so we can really start to peel into it. And then, yeah, citizens are interested, at least a select group of citizens are interested, and we can find a way for them to engage and you to um receive their input.
Do you think it's possible to have with the holidays and you mentioned, like, would we be able to get this back from them for that joint meeting?
No, I don't think so.
That's not even possible?
I doubt it.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we could, we could do that joint meeting, I guess, in February or something.
Yeah, no, if you don't want to, if you don't want to go line by line tonight, maybe you want to go line by line at the joint meeting.
I'm just thinking about the most effective.
Well, I mean, I think last time we met jointly, though, we were talking about the, kind of the, the big ticket substantive items.
Yeah. Which, which informed some of my comments, right? Because I had made comments before, but I went back through and said, the bodies met together and some consensus around this is staying in.
Well, is it, is it, would it make sense then to um go through this stuff tonight and then have something heavier for the joint meeting on, in January to then keep, keep the ball rolling?
I don't, I don't know. There's much more, I mean.
There's not a ton here, I mean, there are.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, finish this and then for January.
So go to Article Two?
Yeah, sure. Uh, so uh the first item in Article Two is uh who appoints the uh zoning administrator? And um state law allows it to be a couple of different ways. And my point is that, and there is a parenthetical comment here, it'll just stay the same where the Board of Supervisors, you know, will pass the resolution at some point in time doing that, which has happened here. Uh, what we do now, right? This next section is partially from our current code, uh one seventy twenty-five D. And that was a change that happened somewhere around the May amendments. That said, remember, in the past, we, all we had was a county administrator who was a zoning administrator. There wasn't a lot of opportunities beyond that. And it said that if the zoning administrator is not available, then the chair of the board becomes the zoning administrator. So uh you changed it at that time to say, the zoning administrator is not available, then the county administrator is the zoning administrator. And then beyond that, then um the, the board can appoint somebody. The way they've rewritten this, it really isn't clear because this is in the absence of the zoning administrator, the county administrator or other designee appointed by the board shall act as the zoning administrator. So my point is simply break that in half, make the county administrator automatically be the zoning administrator as it's in your code now. But sure, you can say that the board can appoint somebody else if there's an absence. You always have their right anyway. But for the reader, they can say, well, that's the progression and how it would work out. And you could appoint somebody anytime you want, quite frankly. This is regarding um, the zoning administrator may act as staff and provide technical and consultive assistance to the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. And the point is just uh accepting cases of appeal. So the zoning administrator can't, can't do those things for the BZA if it's an appeal of her decision. They'll have to have somebody else. And it says May anyways, so it doesn't compel that to happen, but it makes it clear that county staff is intended to support the BZA Planning Commission. Uh, we have had some issues with determining minimum yards for irregular lots, pipe stem lots, weird things where there's just not a rectangle. I think that's why they've put this in, or is this a standard that they've seen? When necessary for irregular lots, determine the boundary lines from which the setbacks shall be measured. So this brings up two comments. Uh, one, what does a regular lot mean? That needs to be defined. And two, we don't use the word setback in our ordinance. Now we use minimum yards. And so that's something that um they need to standardize on the minimum yard language or we need to switch to setback language, but we can't have both. So the concept there is you have a front yard and then there's a minimum front yard that you can't do certain things. The rest of the front yard, you can do things. Why our ordinance is that way, I don't know, but it works. Now, this is just a wording thing. I was channeling Mr. Whitson.
What's that?
It says serve and advisory and then the election of and the adoption of and then review. So it's just, it should say elect officers and adopt bylaws rather than the other wording. Meetings and procedures. The wording in this section was a little bit different than it is shown for the BZA and it was just pointing out that they should standardize the wording on the meetings and procedures for how public hearings should be conducted. So elsewhere in their document, they have it a little bit different, even though the rules are all the same. State rules. This is in the section regarding the BZA meetings and procedures. This is something you've heard from Mr. Mackler. And given the schedule, the Board of Supervisors makes your appointment of a Planning Commission representative on the BZA in January, your organizational meeting. And the BZA has said, well, that's really awkward for us because January is our organizational meeting too and we'd love to know who the, who's the Chair of our body before we make a recommendation to the Board on who we would like you to appoint as the. So this is just suggesting, and that's set in code right now that January is the meeting, so they could change it to December. And this is, this talks about, BZA shall keep minutes of its proceedings showing evidence presented, dot, dot, dot. Shall keep the records filed in the Office of the BZA, which of course, there is no such thing. So probably should be the zoning administration office where all of our zoning files are kept. And then procedurally, they're just speaking about the clerk of the BZA. This is, might be in our current code. It's not highlighted, but it's not defined. The state code talks a little about secretary of BZA. Our code talks about secretaries. So just, they need to get those definitions nailed down so there's no confusion about who are we talking about.
I wonder if the BZA is aware of these changes and if we should.
Yeah, they can be made aware.
Have some correspondence with them.
Give them a reason to meet.
Steph engaged with.
She would have been at the Planning Commission, right? So she.
She was on the Zoom, right?
She was here earlier.
She was here personally tonight.
Yeah, but I meant on the joint meeting, she was.
So now we're talking about enforcement and complaints and inspections. So whenever a violation of the ordinance occurs or is alleged to have occurred, any person may file a written complaint with the zoning administrator. Such complaint shall state fully the cause and the basis thereof and the location of alleged violation. Zoning administrator or designee shall record properly such complaint, immediately investigate facts thereof and take action. So immediately investigate, Michelle said, you know, this, look, this is a one-person department. What, what does immediately mean? Maybe, maybe not immediately, but we should be compelled, if there is a written complaint, to follow up on it, but maybe not immediately. And, and if there is a period of time that the Board, you know, thirty days or whatever, do some, put something there, but a subjective term like immediately.
It was like ASAP.
Is, is not a great idea.
Yep. As soon as possible.
What does that mean? So.
You got to have to, you have a certain, things have to be done by a certain date and then as soon as possible and then hot or immediate right above that.
Right. So we just think immediately is probably not the right word.
Reasonable amount of time.
But it is important to, and we don't have some of the structure of, of, you know, what should be in a complaint, right? We don't have that now. And so this is part of that process and procedure to say, okay, yes, you can make a complaint, but we, we really don't want to say, well, you know, I kind of thought I saw Bubba doing this, that, or the other thing. Let's be specific about what the complaint is.
I'm a big fan of promptly.
Promptly? That's better than immediately?
Yes.
I don't disagree with that. In the notice of violation, Berkeley Group made a recommendation that the violation shall state, so shall, right? The nature of the violation, the date of violation was observed, the remedy or remedies necessary to correct the violation, a reasonable time period for the correction of the violation. We pretty much always include one, two, and four. And Michelle's thought was, you know, should be, do we really want to be saying the remedy? This came up in our very well-known enforcement case where we said, you might be able to cure the violation if you do X, Y, or Z. And then they brought that up in court and, you know, said, well, they told us to do this. And so should, should we do that? I noted that in this acronym, Old Merrill Land use handbook, goes into great detail into, you know, the, this notice of violation, that is best practice to include that. And we generally do want, in these situations, we want compliance. We don't want to go to court. We don't, we just want you to do what you're supposed to do. And so if we can give you a roadmap on how to get there, like you've got fifteen cars, you're only allowed to have one. Remove fourteen cars. Those sort of things make a lot of sense, but, you know, I think there's some devil edged sword here and so it's, Michelle said, mm, I don't know. And I said, well, it is best practice.
So can a complaint, is a complaint have to be written? Can someone call? Because this just addresses the written part, so.
Well, and so this would be.
Is there statutory language up until, or it doesn't seem to be code.
No.
So nothing is, is something we're, okay, just, just interested.
And so this would be your, your effort to put some meat on the bones of people can, that the zoning administrator is empowered to force the ordinance, right?
So, you know, I'm just, the only reason I was asking is because like, once you get that, you shall record.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah.
It's like you may, someone may file a written complaint, but it doesn't say anywhere that someone can show.
And so this is, this is the Board of Supervisors, right? The representative of the community telling your, you know, the staff, person who's implementing this, you know, if you get a complaint, we're, we're working on that thing. You have to. It's not a choice. And as a matter of fact, the Board doesn't have a choice to change it either unless we go through a public hearing process. And, and then the public knows this is what we're going to do. And this is the threshold that if you want to make a complaint, as opposed to just calling up and saying, you know, I saw whatever.
Yeah, I just was, I think a written protects everybody involved because it's written. It's not someone calls and says, I didn't say that.
Now, we can have a form and it can also say.
Because it requires you to record it. It says you shall record it.
Yeah.
So it's like.
So a person can request that their identity not be released, right? And that's, that's allowable, but they have to request that. So we could have a form that says, do you want your identity to be released upon request? And probably check no, because nobody wants to know. They tattle on their neighbor. Otherwise, it's, we have to release it for FOIA. So once we have paper.
Seems to me trying to be good stewards and helping our citizens get through challenges, you would want to give them the necessary correction.
I agree. I think that the, the benefits probably outweigh the occasional issue. And I think even in the case that I was in a veiled way talking about, at the end of the day, that is an integral part of the case. And, and maybe if it's more subjective like that case, we shouldn't do it. But if it's very objective and it's, you know, you get one inoperable car and you've got three, so that's a clear, you know, give her two cars or cover them up or put them in a garage or whatever.
Whatever we ever dealt with that issue.
We, they're coming.
I agree with you there on number three. Because then it has the process backwards. It's like, well, I'm just going to do it and then they'll tell me what I need to do.
Yeah.
That's what that does. And then if you, well, you told me what to do. You wrote it down and I did this, so now, but I didn't do it right. Like, it seems odd to, because it has to address all situations.
Well, it's, that's it.
It has to address all notice of violation situations.
Right.
Because if we, if we include that, it has to go with, and there's myriad things a notice of violation could address.
Yeah, yeah. And so you could change it. So the notice of violation should, should include, you could do that too. Right, rather. Right now it shall, right.
Yeah.
So, but this is, this is good input. So the Berkeley Group will look at that and say, well, you know, the reason we put that in there is because of this and we saw this case law come out of wherever. And they can explain why they think it's a good idea or not a good idea based on those comments. So the other one we talked about was civil penalties. So this kind of iterative process, the first foray is civil penalties. It's a fine and unless you contest it, you stay out of court. And if the fines get too big, you automatically move into criminal like we have now. And so this was discussed at your joint meeting and, and the comment says the Planning Commission and Board have agreed, be a general consensus to move in this direction. So keep it.
I noticed the violation, wasn't that case that just came out on the carport? Wasn't that on point? Wasn't it deficient? The, like, the notice of violation didn't, didn't explicitly state the, was it, was Virginia Supreme Court?
Yeah.
So, I mean, isn't that, I mean, should they be pulling that in?
What, what that was is, and we could include the specific language and we always do.
Is it about, about right to appeal or something?
Exactly. And if you don't, you're done.
And it's got to be stated.
And you have to say that.
In all caps.
Yeah. So there's a paragraph that goes to the bottom of it. But that could be, you know, listed in here.
It seems like, I mean, that, that would seem to be a big decision.
Yeah.
It should be in the form for the letter or whatever. It should always be in there and not just in the ordinance.
Right.
That this is a determination or this is the decision, if you don't appeal it in thirty days, it stays. That's like the illegal sign we have in Sperryville. The BZA determined it was a sign, but we still are looking at an illegal sign two, three years after the fact.
And so, I mean, that's a different situation in that the Board's in the middle of rewriting the sign ordinance and, and so are you, do you go to court while you're actively changing your ordinance in a way that would accept it? And, you know, that's, you could, but I don't know how a judge would consider that to say, well, wait a minute, you're, you're prosecuting this, but you're also changing your rules at the same time. What is it that you really want? And is it worth your effort? But I agree that it is, if you're just going to take, today it's a violation, we just run its course regardless of whether we're going to change the rules tomorrow.
Should have. Now nobody believes it's an illegal sign.
That's really nothing. So fees and charges.
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
So this is two things about this, and there's probably another comment here. Code of Virginia says we're supposed to do this by ordinance. So we've, we need to clean that up because you've adopted it by resolution. So we'll, we'll do that. But it also says that no fee shall be required where the applicant is, Rapid County or any agency, authority, commission, or body specifically created by the county, state code, federal government. And the question is, can we extend that to nonprofits that are principally funded by the county, like you did for fireworks? And so that's an open question.
Good question.
Why?
Is that driven by the Code of Virginia?
It might be. And so that's, let them sort it out. Tell us yes or no. But it'd be nice, I mean, why are we charging the voluntary fire department for a big permit if we're then taking money out of their hand pocket to, and to them to pay back to the county? And, and it might be because we have to. This is my comment here on setting the fees. We, well, we have to do this by ordinance? We have to do it by ordinance? I wasn't aware of that. Delinquent taxes and changes. Boards aware, you adopted a chapter in your taxation, a section in your taxation chapter that fully enables this fifteen-two-twenty-two-eighty-six-B, which says, if you're not up to date on your taxes, then we can withhold certain types of permits that are broader than zoning. So land disturbance building, et cetera. So the zoning ordinance wouldn't really speak to those land disturbance permits, et cetera. And that's why you included in your Chapter one fifty-one. So my comment here is that we probably don't need to do all this, but we'd be cleaner just to reference over to Chapter one fifty-one. Because it's already there. So something new here, this concept, and we use these heavily in my last community of pre-application meeting. But prior to submitting any application contained within this article, a pre-application meeting may be held between applicant and administrator. During the meeting, you can go through stuff and talk about this, that, and the other thing. Great. We can do that anyway. And Michelle pointed out, you know, should we really have this in the code or not? And my thought ultimately was, the real thing for us is the protection. Any comments or recommendations provided to the applicant that are not approvals and do not guaran, are not approvals and do not guarantee approval for future permit. So if we meet with you ahead of you actually applying for your permit and submitting your application, that's not a determination, that's not, that's just us.
It's just spitballing.
Yeah. And, and don't say, you told me in the pre-application meeting that this was acceptable and my special exception would pass. No, no, no.
Well, you know, I, my view of it is, at least in my job, a U.S. industry comes in and petitions for relief under U.S. trade laws and they, we all know that the labor unions, everyone else, they bring a petition into the Department of Commerce and the International Trade Commission and they lay it out. They go, hey, what do you guys think? Well, it looks good. And basically by having that conference, that pre-filing conference, they're even directed on what to remedy so that when it's filed, it, I've, I've seen probably in, in twenty-five years, I've probably seen no more than two or three petitions that were, upon which the government did, did not initiate a proceeding. And I take that experience and I look at this and I think, kind of dangerous. I appreciate the efficiency. I appreciate the customer service aspect of it, but human nature is to infer from that, that face-to-face time that it might, or, oh, hey, everyone was positive. So I, I mean, if you think you can.
So the flip side is, should we be precluded from having pre-application meetings?
That seems very unfriendly in a county of seven thousand people.
So if we're going to have pre-application meetings. Yeah, if we're going to have them, then we should say, manage your expectations. What this is and isn't.
It's devil's advocate. That's all I'm saying. It's just.
Well, and let's face it, it's a, it's a self-informing process and we often learn things in the process that shape our opinion from our initial meeting.
I get it.
With the applicant.
Now, for most, we don't do big commercial stuff here and probably won't really, I mean, if we do, I'm sure the community would love it because it would be in the general commercial district where we want it. But.
I mean, we have had it, we have had examples where maybe things were messy on a project and we heard about it and then everyone got in a room and talked about it. And it helped. And if that had happened on the, I'm, I'm thinking of like the, in the NS two eleven project.
And Michelle's walking people through the process all the time and it's done in an informal way. And I think it is good to say, you know, understand what these conversations mean and don't mean. We don't.
Fair enough.
You know, we. We, we have the checkbook, but we're not allowed to sign them.
Yeah, no, I think it's a really good idea. I mean, we can't have a, a building or zoning department where people don't talk to people. You talk to people all the time, you know, we're going to have people. So defining that scope, I think, is a pretty good idea.
That's fine.
Again, this is just another reference to that fifteen-two-twenty-two-eighty-six, which talks about delinquent taxes. And again, we're that perhaps rough cross-reference there. If an application is determined to be incomplete, the administrator must send notice to the applicant that the application has been determined to be incomplete. This happens all the time. This came up, this came up with the most recent changes to, for special exceptions on when we deem an application to be on file is only after it's deemed complete. Informing applicant of the reasons why the application was rejected as incomplete. The applicant has ninety days or some other agreed timeframe to submit. And so my comment here is, agreed to by who? And so, my comment here is, agreed to by who? We have to be a little more specific here. So, it can be between the zoning administrator and the applicant, but it's not, you know, well, the two applicants that are joint, just agreed and, right. Ownership oath required. So, this applications or applications for amendments to the zoning ordinance or official zoning map variances or special exceptions shall be sworn to, I just, if you go look at the Code of Virginia, the wording is much cleaner for where this is coming from. That's my only suggestion. There's applications or applications for amendments. That was my fault. Major and minor site plans. I did share with the board an example from Stafford, which I think they do a pretty good job. I didn't dig into comments here other than, I think, should do it and see if I might maybe getting ahead of myself. Say, hold on a second, I am getting ahead of myself. An applicant may submit a minor or major site plan pursuant to Division 6. Or if they do not submit a minor or a major site plan, they must submit a sketch plan. And so, may, I said may's not correct. They have to submit one if it's required, right? So, if there's an X in that table that says site plan's required, then you have to do it. So, it's not a may.
Explains anywhere that what minor or major site plan means?
That's coming up and it's not detailed in here yet, but it'll need to be.
Okay.
And then, this is something we talked about. So, when an application comes in, what must it include? Whether a minor or major site plan or if not one of those, this kind of scaled sketch plan that would have these minimum things? And those, that's our current ordinance has that language. And the question is, for rezonings that are changing residential density, can we require as part of a site plan, a subdivision plat that would show the layout? And we went through this with the recent residential rezoning project and there was a plat prepared, but there were no proffers to say that they were gonna use that plat. It was just kind of a nice depiction of what could happen, but not what would happen. And is there something that we can require? If you wanna do that, then this is a requirement that you have to submit. And then, your subsequent subdivision would be in substantial accord with the plat that you had during your rezoning. I don't know if we can go that far, but I think it would be nice because when you're making that rezoning decision, you really wanna know how the site's gonna be laid out because that might impact your decision on whether it's appropriate or not.
Yeah.
Like, in that case, are you gonna connect to that road or are you not gonna connect to that road? Or in, and the decision to approve it might change depending on that.
Well, I think we're only gonna be seeing more of that, not less of that. So, we better get our ducks in a row.
So, what are we allowed, can we require that during rezoning for residential density-changing project? A lot of times, the developers will proffer that in because they, they already know what they wanna do and they use that as a carrot to get you to approve it. You talked a lot about whether text amendments should be allowed to be applied for by a citizen. And so, I think at the end of the joint meeting, the board and the planning commission discussed and want to retain the right for individuals to do that. At least in the version that goes to public hearing. So, this is again, carrying on the comment I just made about can we require some sort of plat for rezoning? Special exceptions. So, as I did tonight, been pointing out those sections 170, 47, C and G, the kind of the true intent behind special exceptions that, you know, it's not a use provided for, but in some situations, some parcels, it's okay if you put some restrictions on it. I know, by the way, it's the responsibility of the applicant to bear the burden of proof that it's appropriate. And so, therein in tro here, I think is okay, but I think it needs some more meat on the bones to really substantiate the, why special exceptions are a route, an option from a defensibility perspective when, when we might find ourselves in court. And then, just a linguistic thing here, special exception permit. Our current code doesn't speak of special exception permits, there's special exceptions. And so, just making that standard. Which different ordinances do it different ways. So, here, special exception.
Everyone gets a gold star for still being there.
And this is just there, the way this is organized, you have several sections for different types of applications. I'm sorry, go through this. And the standards and procedures. So, this part here, is it, why is this included here? There's a special section above for amendments. This is for special exceptions, this whole procedure section. So, this zoning text should not be referenced there. And then, this is old language, special permit or special exception. They probably search for special use permit, but this was one instance in our current code that just said special permit as opposed to special use permit. Board supervisors shall render this decision within 12 months of the date of the adoption of a motion or, or a resolution proposing amendment or the filing of petition proposing amendment in the zoning office. And again, this is amendment language, not special exception language. That belongs in a different section. So, this is the, there's a renewal section and then further down, the period of validity section. This is basically, the comment says, we will continue to apply time limits to our special exceptions. Thank you very much, put that in the ordinance. And so, is this comment as well? So, this is the, kind of the meat of that, that you can put a time limit.
In general, when we made sort of the, I'll just call it the expedited decision to eliminate special use permits, how much, I mean, you did, I remember you did sort of the best that you could in going through the ordinance to make sure that there was not duplic, or I should say ambiguous language in that regard.
So, there's still such a thing as special use permit in our code today. There just don't happen to be any uses that require it.
Okay.
And so, what this does, it eliminates the concept entirely.
That's, that was my question. So, this is accomplishing what we didn't accomplish at that time because of the urgency.
Yep. So, this is just a comment that I did not go through the full section of site plans, but we, I did provide those examples from Stafford. I do think there's great value in having a minor and a major for different intensity uses. And I think the board and planning commission agreed. Also important and that still needs to be worked out and conveyed to the Berkeley group is the timing of things. And it's unusual to require an engineered plan for a special exception type use. Normally, what would happen is you have a, you have a parcel and then you have a determination of whether the use you wanna pursue is by right or is not. And so, if it's not by right, then you need to go get yourself a special exception that basically pulls it into your authority to pursue that process. And if you do, then you can keep moving along the pathway. But at that special exception process, there's little guarantee that you're gonna actually be able to do the project. And to require somebody to pay 15,000 or $30,000 on an engineered set of plans at that time is really onerous for someone to make that go-no-go decision on, they're not even investing capital yet in a, in a use and you're saying you gotta spend 30 grand before we even will give you a decision on whether we think it's okay or not. To even ask to go through the rest of the process. So, the way I, it normally works in my mind is you, if it's by right, then fine, then you do your detailed site plan to meet the engineering requirements of whether it's flood plain, zoning for lighting or landscape or parking, the setback, front yard, the, all of that stuff. And utilities for the health department or if it's in Sperryville, the utilities there show how all that fits together. And then, once you prove that you can do that and everybody agrees that you've laid your site out, then you can get your zoning permit and then you can get your building permit. But we put that detailed design at the beginning and the special exception sometimes, or it's not clear when it should happen. So, this comment is, we really need to make it clear, the process that one would follow. When does a site plan get done? It must get done before you get a zoning permit, our ordinance says that, but it's not clear relative to this special exception.
Very good.
And what I just said, I wrote in two sentences, but. I said, what I just said was two sentences, but I made it more complicated.
They can watch the video.
I guess if you're talking about special exceptions, I mean, I think more detail on the front end is what we're going for.
Well, yeah, so what we need is, what are those key things that you need? You need a scale drawing. We need to know where the building's gonna be located. We need to probably know where, you know, flood zones are and things like that. But it doesn't need to be an engineered plan with topography and everything and the erosion sediment control plan and all that stuff that your site plan requires. And our, if you go look at our site plan ordinance sections now, it's super detailed of what they're supposed to do. You just don't need all that information to make the SE determination. There are a core set of facts that you do need, but you don't need all of that. And, and if you really enforce that, and now that we do allow certain portions to be waived by the planning commissioner or the zoning administrator, depending on whether it's a special exception or by right, but it's a lot cleaner if somebody knows what they have to do. And ultimately, they have to engineer it. Just because they get their SE, they still need to do an engineered plan before they can show that they've met all the requirements, before they get their zoning permit. But at least then, they know it's administrative, right? I've gone to the legislative part, now it's administrative. If I just follow the rules correctly, I can do my project.
I just don't wanna get to a point with a special exception where we really need more detail to make a decision and it's, and it's not available to us.
Well, and we can double-check the wording, but what it says now, and I think it still says, is we, you can ask for more information. But I would argue that it should not rise to an engineered plan with topography and all those things and except for probably very rare circumstance.
I was gonna say, it would depend on the application.
Right, and in that case, we could require.
You could, but that, the applicant can say, it's just not worth the squeeze. I'm out.
Right, and then, then we're done.
Yeah.
Remember?
Yeah.
Thanks to you, I wanna get a bumper sticker that says, I use that all the time and you kind of coined it for me. I love it. There's, there's much juice, it's not worth the squeeze.
So, zoning permits. So, right now, we, this is reorganized a little bit. Right now, you must get a zoning permit before you get a building permit unless you don't need to do that if you're not disturbing the ground and you don't need a health department permit, then you don't need a zoning permit. And, you know, we don't really wanna deal with zoning permits for every little thing, but at the same time, there are a lot of instances when you're not needing a health department permit and you're not disturbing earth, when somebody should be looking whether that use is compatible in that location. Like, could be home occupations that are just ridiculous for that location. Somebody comes in and gets a building permit for a new 1,000 amp electrical service. Maybe we should be looking at whether that use is appropriate wherever that residential location is. But we don't, we're not allowed to right now because you don't have to get a zoning permit unless, if you don't disturb earth and don't have health departments. So, I think that's something we probably need to look at in expanding who does need to get a zoning permit. I don't know that we wanna say everybody needs to get a zoning permit because Michelle would get really bogged down with paperwork. We do a lot of zoning permits now, but we had a joint zoning, building permit application in my last locality and it seemed to work pretty good. That's just the wording. So, it's talked about, you can't get your zoning permit until you do some of these other things, but if required, a grading permit, which we call land disturbing permits and it's codified in our chapter 98. So, there's suggestion that a zoning permit should be posted on-site with the building permit. And both Michelle and I say, if we get a building permit, and generally, it's a prerequisite with the exception of the conversation we have, I don't think we wanna get in the business of posting zoning permits for every construction project. I don't know who else does that, but I don't think we should do it. Okay, temporary permits. So, we have, this is mostly current language, temporary mobile home permits. We allow mobile homes to be placed in certain circumstances, like if somebody has a fire, they can have a temporary mobile home or they're building their house. But people don't tend to put mobile homes up as defined in the ordinance. They put, they use campers. And we saw that a lot in hurricane area where, you know, hurricane would go through and there would be all these FEMA trailers, right? They're camper trailers. And, and those were exempted. Now, there's been a review of some sort by the county attorney, 2018, 19, and said, for all practical purposes, they're same. But if you look at our ordinance now, there's very clearly distinct definitions for a mobile home and camper trailer. I think probably if it's constrained, you should allow a camper trailer to be used in certain situations when they have an open building permit for certain periods of time when they're, you know, building their house or recovering from a disaster. So, that's what this comment says.
And my guess is that, or not my guess, my sense, and I remember an example of this from a few years ago, maybe, it's like, somebody's like, oh, yeah, I've got a camper because I'm building something, but then you find out they're not. There's no evidence of it. But even with, even with this ambiguity or lack of clarity from an enforcement perspective, if somebody is involved in legitimate construction under a building permit, we're kinda like, okay, they're in a camper.
If you got a permit, then you're good. If you don't, you're, you gotta hit yourself.
But, but you're saying that the way it's currently written, it's actually not written to support a use of a camper in a situation like that, but we're allowing it.
Seems to be.
It seems to be. Yeah.
It's just a, they must've moved some sections around and they have busted reference there. There's this conversation of joint public hearings and I thought maybe it could be expanded a little bit more about what that means. I know what it means, most people know what it means, but if you're gonna mention it here, let's talk about what it means and maybe the procedures that are gonna happen when the planning commission and the board supervisors get together to talk about a special exception.
I'm sure, what time is automatic adjournment? I just want.
11:30. Is it 11 or 11:30?
11.
My point wasn't, are we there yet? My point was, we have to stay out of that.
Yes.
Or do we?
I don't know.
Not have the 5 o'clock adjournment like our peers up in Florida, Virginia the other day.
Make sure Mr. Crasher gets his money where he's at his last meeting.
They, they approved a bike trail at 12:35 AM. So, I would rather not see that happen.
We won't go past 11, I promise. So, we've talked about posting signs at public hearing parcels and that's something Michelle's doing. So, this puts a code section in there to manage expectations. I think it's way too prescriptive right now. Some localities make the applicant pick up the sign, post the sign, pay a deposit for the sign. And in those cases, I think being more prescriptive is okay. In this situation where we're posting signs, I don't think we wanna be quite that prescriptive.
One thing I'll say about.
But we should say that we're gonna do it.
One thing I'll say about your signs, because I'm up in. One thing I'll say about your signs, because I'm up in, like, the plains all the time, and foxer county signs, which I think are, what's the word, prescriptive or descriptive? Like zoning matter-
They have like Z dash, number, number, you can't read it.
You can't read it, and because they're printing the specifics on it, the signs are blown away or lying down, I'm like, it's really kind of disingenuous, because they're not telling anybody anything. Our signs are signs.
So, a lot of people just use-
They're metal, or whatever.
Yeah, these are chloroplast ones, like the political signs, and they tape stuff to them, and so we decided to get aluminum signs that are reflective, that are just universal, they say, but you have to use the website, so if you can see the sign, you go to the website, the rep, www.rappahannockcountyva.gov/permit, and you can see the list of all the permits that are happening, and then probably, you know where you were when you saw the sign, and where, you know, which one is the one you're talking about.
And you're saying that that level of notice, on a physical sign, is adequate?
Yeah, oh yeah, well, you don't need to do any, but, so what do we want? And what, what staff has decided to do is have those hardy signs, and have that link over to the website.
I agree.
But, so we don't want to have all this stuff on here, and the specifics, we want it to be more general, because we're controlling it, and-
The reason that we started using the sign concept is because, when you send out the notices that are required, or written notices to the neighbors, some neighbors got them, and some didn't, because our tax map numbers are off, and that's how some people's property gets auctioned up.
That could be, and it could be that they aren't adjacent, they're kind of diagonal across the street, but there's a sliver of a parcel, so they don't count, or they don't read the paper, or whatever, I think the signs are, they're important.
The one particular property was within the one mile, or whatever, of the editor of the newspaper at that time, and he didn't get a notice.
So the mile we have, is a special rule for us for towers, that's major pain. We make them do that.
That's what, that's what started the sign concept, is we would post signs, so that, you know, even if our tax map numbers and stuff are messed up, even if they didn't read the newspaper, even if the editor didn't read their own newspaper, there'd be a sign saying, "Hey, something's gonna be happening."
Pay attention, something's happened, yeah. We have five signs right now, and that's worked out so far. We've come close a couple times.
Have you ever had someone just come in and say, "Hey, I saw a sign in my neighborhood, what's going on?" Or are people going to the website, do you think?
Most are going to the website.
Have you had anybody come in?
They may come in and ask about a specific one, and we already know which one it is.
Good.
And then, relative to the signs, while we are saying we're gonna do them, if the sign doesn't happen to be there for some reason, somebody picked it up, took it, do whatever, it's not a flaw in the process. So, we aspire to do this, we want people to know what's going on, but if for some reason it didn't happen, it's, it doesn't-
You don't have language that says, "You shall see a sign."
Well, yeah, what is it? So it says, "The holding of a public hearing, a validity of action of an application should not be affected by the unauthorized removal of a notice which has been posted in accordance with the section." So, something like that has to be in there to say, if we put a sign up and everything, and something happened, it's not a defect in the process if the sign goes away, or something. This last one's kind of short. That's just wording. Wording. So, just talking, this whole section's on nonconformities. And so, a nonconforming use is abandoned regardless of like, time has passed. Abandonment means intentionally stopping uses, so it was just confusing to me, this wording. Oh, I see what your comment is saying, yeah. So this, a lot of times, these sort of things, in this section, is important, and it gets into areas that are uncomfortable. We had it come in, in Sperryville-
Yep.
Where, you know, you have a use that's nonconforming, because we've changed our zoning, and it doesn't allow residential anymore. Have you been using it? Have you used it as residential in the last two years? How does somebody prove that they've used it for residential in the last two years? We have ordinances that say, "We don't want residential there," because that's no longer a by-right use, so then people are like, "What do you mean? Of course it's a house, it's always been a house." And you're like, "I'm not trying to be mean, I'm just trying to administer the ordinance." And so this whole chapter tries to give a little bit more structure to that whole discussion of nonconformities. Busted reference. Again, setbacks relative to minimum yards, we just need to be consistent. If a lot cannot meet the setbacks, and are other requirements of variance, shall be obtained through the variance process outlined in whatever, like, nobody's required to get a variance, right? They can just not do what you want to do, right? So, variance may be obtained. I'm not gonna make you get a variance. If you want to proceed, it shall be obtained. And this is the wording, so, making a nonconforming lot more nonconforming.
Double negative?
Yeah, I'm used to using the term further from conformity.
Yeah, it's crazy.
And we see that a lot in signs, too, not as lots, like, you make a change to my sign, and yes, your sign is old, and you're not allowed to have that sign now, but as long as you don't make it, move it further from conformity, you're okay. This is just a busted reference to wherever they borrowed some of this language from. There you go. So, again, at high level, some cases wording, but first step for them, if they could just get these things incorporated, recodify, and get something back to us, I think we'll be positioned to better dig into it on the next cycle-
Yeah.
-of likely several cycles.
Okay.
So you need a motion?
I don't need anything, I don't think, I mean, I can.
Well, then I'll make a motion for, to send these back to the Berkeley Group for further consideration and incorporation by them.
And those are the four, four different files?
Article one, two, three, and nine.
Cool. And they'll recodify the whole thing.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
We're gonna send this tonight without any more public feedback on what we just walked through, and without any feedback from the planning commission.
I thought, so my comment before was to send this to them, to then send it back so that we could all talk about it, have the meeting with the planning commission to talk about it. That's what I was suggesting before, to move it along.
My view is, the bulk of this incorporates the joint meeting.
Yeah, like the major things.
The big five things, and the rest is just little stuff in the codification, and so to at least get to that level, and so you can start digging into it.
Well, I think, from my perspective, part of the challenge of working on something like this, with all of the organizations that need to be involved, is that everybody stay in sync and manage their expectations. And for me, a big part of getting out of sync was something that I thought we were very clear with at the outset of the exercise with the Berkeley Group, was that we really wanted tracked changes. And they never came to us and said, "We are finding tracked changes very unwieldy, what would you find acceptable?" They just said, "We're not going to do that," and they brought us back other product. And I, having been through this with the comprehensive plan, and knowing how important these guiding documents are to the people of our county, I do think it is taking us a lot of work through this, but I don't think that's because of anything that we did, I think it's because of the way, and I'm not blaming, but it certainly happened, that the work moved forward with the Berkeley Group in a, in a manner contrary to the way we requested it be done. And I think if we send this back now, what version of this will we be discussing at our joint meeting? Will we be discussing this as it exists tonight? Will we be discussing another round of changes that the Berkeley Group will have worked through between now and then? I don't, I don't understand why we would approve to send these tonight, when we're talking about a joint meeting, to talk about this language in January.
Doesn't think it'll be done in January.
Well, I don't, I mean, if you, if you want a joint meeting to talk about these comments, that's certainly an acceptable route. I think you already had a joint meeting to talk about a lot of those comments.
Plus, plus there's-
But you can.
I mean, let me, let me ask this, just going back to your track changes point, which I didn't, was your focus on before you said that. I mean, we can, we can get, we can send this to Berkeley Group, tell them to advance it, we have what we worked on, and do a doc comparator, and, and just see where they differ.
The difficulty is, there's, their paragraphs are just moving all over the place, and to do, to try to track changes, you can see in these articles how difficult it is, but everything's changed, because it's just, you know, in the other articles, it's done this. So it gets complicated to try to convey that, and so they did go back and provide these four with the big changes, with tracked changes the best they could, to show you what's new, and what's moved, and, and I think they captured it pretty well on, on that, but it's still, it's hard to track. It is. And it's the nature of reorganizing a document makes it harder to track.
I guess my thinking was, making the motion, was that the things that we just discussed now, which were pretty high level, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that they could then incorporate the things we just discussed, and that we could discuss further substantive stuff with this stuff at the planning commission meeting. That was kind of my thinking, was to kind of just keep it, yeah, just to keep it moving, because I feel like the stuff we just, that you just went over, is not-
It's possible they could get it back by January 15th-ish, or whenever that meeting is, I just don't know.
But I mean, we could, the other alternative then would just be to hold off on this, and then just meet and talk about it with the planning commission again.
It's just like, you know, following the bouncing ball, and I just want to make sure all, everything is-
I understand.
Moving at the same pace, and when we sit down, we're all talking about the same.
Yeah, I guess, to your point, like, you know, if we send this to them, and they send us something back that's like, not recognizable, and we're like, whoa, and then, it could be more work for you to figure out, what is it that we're talking about?
Well, it better come back with 170 dash something.
Right, yeah. I don't know, I'm not sure, do you think that you could ask them, "Hey, we've gone over these things, this is what staff has recommended you guys incorporate, is there a way to do this and get it back to us, so that we can kind of-"
Just another-
Yeah, well, that's what we talked about, we just didn't talk about the schedule, when they would be able to turn that around. And very, I mean, 45, probably enough, but-
I mean, I agree with you, Ms. Smith, totally, that we want to make sure that the public is with us on this, so.
Because basically, like, what we'd be getting, the way I look at it, just in my own drafting work, is we're, a lot of times, you go, all right, you hand it off to somebody, and a lot of times, I'll say to my colleague, "Hey, implement your changes, and I don't want to track," because then you work off of a new version of the underlying document, inclusive of, you know, that person's input. Here, at some point, otherwise, we're gonna, I think we're gonna get really bogged down at some point, if we, if we meet like, tonight, and go through this, and nothing really, as Vance said, is really significant, I feel like we can hand it to them, and just get a new version from which to work, recognizing that we'll want to do a check against the earlier version. But, I mean, I work in track changes every day, like I think most of us do, and, you know, when I'm on version nine of the same draft, has been going back and forth for weeks, you know, at some point, you just have to trust your colleagues, or in this case, an outside consultant, to adopt the changes, make additional changes, and give us a clean draft, because otherwise, it becomes, as Gary said, completely unwieldy, especially when you're moving stuff around. And obviously, we want, over time, we're gonna have more and more confidence that what we're getting back from them is responsive to our input. But I just think that if we don't start locking down, at least, something that we can rely on as a foundational document will never get done.
I think there's, there's two things happening. One, we, we want to have a readable, clear document that is understandable, and we want to make sure we're not missing stuff that we used to have, or, you know, changing stuff that we used to have. And, and those two things are difficult, maybe, to do together, and, and we probably should ask them to continue to track their changes the best they can, but we might have to look at it clean, to really understand the readability, and then have the track changes and compare 15 documents to say, "Well, where is that section?"
That's kind of my point, I mean, you do have to have, my experience, just my experience, is at some point, you just need a clean document, recognize everything that went into that, you previously reviewed, and were okay with, and I think that's kind of Vance's point, that's kind of what we did with the joint meeting, at least in my view. So, otherwise, it's just, it becomes very-
And my thought here is, they, you know, we gave them a task, they did it, they missed big and a few things, and if we can shift those big things, maybe we can get like, 50%? If we, if we punt it back and get it back, maybe we're 50%, and then we can really start to work on it.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Are you guys sticking with your motion, sticking with the second?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine, this is because my intention was just that we would just get this product back to us, and then go over it with the planning commission, and we can go over the same things that we've just gone over tonight, but they'll be incorporated differently. They'll be actually, instead of comments, they'll be in the document, so, I mean, that was my thinking.
All those in favor say aye.
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 I didn't realize we were done with discussion.
It was quite a long discussion, sorry.
I mean, there was, no, is, are we finished with discussion? So, to that end, I vote nay.
I'm not sure of the tally. Mr. Fraser, what was your vote?
Aye, aye.
I would just, would want to add, I know that there seems to be an appetite for a joint meeting with a lot of public input, but one of the ideas at the beginning of this is that we weren't, we weren't scrapping the zoning ordinance and starting over, we were pretty much trying to keep everything we had, but just reorganize it in a clean, more user-friendly, logical way, with the attention to detail that it needs. And I, I just hope, in our relish to take public input, that we won't be looking for a lot of departure from what we've got on the books traditionally. And I, I don't want to get too far afield with things, and, you know, it's a big project, and if we can keep a focused scope on it, I think we'll be much more successful, of course, with ample public feedback within that scope.
Yeah, well, and I, I mean, I, I kind of think, like, this amount of material tonight is, it's, it's, it's a, it's, even though it's after 10, it's a reasonable amount of material to address in one chunk, you know, kind of like we were talking about budget review meetings, you, you get to a point where you can't keep going, and it's-
And that's because you already talked about the big points before, and I could just say, you guys already talked about this.
Right, correct, so, it's really two meetings were, to get us to a point where hopefully we get a more advanced draft of these four sections, so.
Absolutely, I totally agree with you. I feel like the process here really needs to be about strengthening and making our zoning ordinance as defensible as possible, and that, toward that end, I agree with you that we just want to keep moving.
Speaking of keeping moving, zoning and subdivision ordinance amendment.
Oh yeah, the little stuff.
So, plenty of interest in this during your public comment periods. Staff has discussed with you previously, you have two sections in your code right now, a section in your zoning ordinance, and a section in your subdivision ordinance, which staff would generally recommend never to do, and that comes to play later in this discussion, the second half of the- And that comes to play later in this discussion, the second half that Mr. Fraser brought forward. There's really no reason to write these things twice because invariably they'll end up getting different and then conflicting with each other and just, there's no use. At any rate, what it does say now was added on March fifth, nineteen ninety, and if you look at those minutes, they don't say a whole lot about why, but it was added at that time. Excepting the conservation and agricultural zoning district subdivision of land into less than twenty-five acre lots, which is an interesting statement because lots is a defined term, may be allowed. See other applicable provisions to the chapter and of one forty-seven subdivision of land only where public road rights away are fifty feet in width from the property to be divided to a state primary highway. We've talked about this a lot.
Is that the extent of the legislative history and the adoption of that clause?
Yeah, so the ordinance, the overall chapter ordinance was adopted in nineteen eighty-six. This was added in March of nineteen ninety because probably somebody wanted to do a specific project in a specific location. They said, well, we'll just do this and we'll stop them. It was a guess. And, but it was, it applies everywhere, right? And that's just a guess. So some issues with this are the fact that it speaks to fifty-foot right-of-way. Exactly, fifty feet. Not at least fifty feet. Certainly doesn't speak to how wide the traveled way is, the hard surface of a road. So really it's nothing to do with the act, the ability of the road to convey vehicles. It only has to do with how much land is set aside and available for the public to, to traverse. And there are very few locations that meet this and we've only been able to find one. And that's Chester Gap Road, which was reconstructed through a project to widen the road and that went to a standard fifty-foot right-of-way from the bottom of the hill up. But all of the roads that intersect with Chester Gap Road would not meet this. So you could subdivide one of the lots along Chester Gap Road, except they're already too small, so you can't subdivide them anyway. Because they're not big enough to be subdivided. As I said, it carves out conservation and agricultural zoning district, which is, which is probably ninety-seven percent of all land in the county. So it doesn't apply to, you know, really substandard public roads like Turkey Ridge Road where it's very narrow and large acreage lots, which a large acreage parcels could, could lead to many two-acre lots along that road. Doesn't apply to that. That's perfectly okay to divide there. It, it does affect some like Thornton Gap Church Road, Woodard Road, where in some parcels are ag and conservation along that road. And it's perfectly okay to carve off a two-acre lot if you have enough acreage. But you can't, you can't carve off a larger lot in a, in a RR zoning. So staff has prepared a determination after being called out on this by a property owner and basically have said, we don't believe that it's appropriate in the ordinance and I know the public doesn't like that. But we don't think it is appropriate. We do think that there should be a requirement. If you want to subdivide your parcel, you must have access to that parcel for, for residential development as far a lot. You must have access to that parcel. So you can't just take this parcel out of the center of a thousand acre parcel and carve it off for a house and not have access. So you have to have a road, a public road, a private road that meets the standards in the ordinance and to be able to get there. And so if you want to carve off six lots, well, then you need a type-one road. But if you're going to carve off five lots, then you need a type-two road. And that's already in the ordinance of what you need. Whether that be within the development itself or getting to that development from the nearest public road. So there is some suggested language here that we think is the, the low bar, if you will, of, of, you have road requirements in your ordinance. There is a public network of roads right now that you have zero control over. Anybody can drive on them anytime they want. You have limited control. For example, Bend the New Road, you've said trucks aren't allowed to drive all the way through, but they can drive halfway through.
And then back out.
And then back out if they have a delivery, right? But you don't control the public roads and anybody can use them for anything, anytime. And so should you have a restriction on the capability of the road to actually convey cars? I think we could probably get somewhere with that if the board really felt that that was important. But given the, that this has only applied to non-ag and conservation, we're talking about relatively small parcel sizes, which means you're talking about relatively few subdivided lots, which means you're talking about relatively little traffic as compared to roads that can convey any number of cars for any number of reasons. Because somebody puts a holiday light display up, then the traffic goes through the roof because people drive on that road and we don't regulate that.
So if we were to tomorrow, rezone a hundred acres down Turkey Ridge Road as RR two, that would trigger if someone chopped up those lots or dissubdivided them, the type-one road.
I would, I would argue you wouldn't. However, if you did during rezoning, that's in a situation where you, you might want to have a proper right-of-way because then you could require off-site proffers in exchange for the development of that property and say, well, if you want to have these however many hundred homes back here in this agriculture area, you need to improve the road because it's inadequate. But in a situation where it's by right, you can't do that. And so I think, you know, all these agriculture, conservation, this has got nothing to do with any of that unless you wanted to restrict all of those too, which I don't think you want to do because you want to allow your citizens to, you know, carve off the two acres they can have their kids live there or whatever. But, you know, ultimately the board, we think you should need to change the ordinance language to something. There is a recommendation, it can be something else that speaks to the asphalt width like you do for campgrounds. If you really think that that's needed.
What's your, what's your response to the assertion that was in Mississi, Mississauga's letter that the zoning administrator's recent determined letter regarding Mount Airy reverses our earlier decision to not allow for rezoning of that property RR two? I mean, because.
Not filing.
So, so we, we denied that rezoning request.
From RR five to RR two, yeah.
So we left it as RR five. And at least my, my rationale, if I remember correctly, was that looking at the density of that property and not really knowing the history, kind of like not knowing the history of this. It's impossible, it's virtually impossible to go back in time and understand why specifically that property was owned the way it was, but it was. And then you look at it in the broader context and you go, okay, that looks about right. And so I think our denial, or at least my, my primary, my primary, the primary basis on which I supported denial of that rezoning request and I feel like what we, the basis on which we denied it was very reasonable and was not ripe for appeal because it basically said, all things being equal, the density, the density that would accompany an RR five, the zoning of that property is about right in the grand scheme of things. So there's now this question about the extent to which statements made that this fifty-foot right-of-way thing were at the heart of that decision and that we would be effectively undoing that decision.
It was, it was referenced in that decision, but I don't think it was the, the end-all. It wasn't referenced in the, it was referenced in the staff report, but I don't think it was referenced in the decision. But, you know, I think you, you look at that particular situation, of course, this is much, is broader. Although it's a fairly limited universe of parcels that really are affected by this. You have somebody come to you and say, I would like to have this zoned RR two because I think, you know, it's close to the village and the comp plan says we want stuff near the village. But the comp plan also says consistent with the underlying zoning, right? And they say, well, you know, it's RR five now and, and if I just do the math of thirty-five acres or so in RR five, that means I get about seven houses. I might have to figure out roads and stuff and slope. And we say, well, seven's a lot of houses. And then you say you want to do RR two. And then we say, ooh, geez, thirteen, that's, well, that's too many. But then you say no to that and then they come back and say, okay, I'm fine, I'll do RR five. And then you say, well, you can't do that either. You, you, you can't do RR two because it's too dense. You can't do RR five because, you know, we didn't really mean it when we zoned it RR five. We wanted you to think it was RR five when you bought it and all that, but you can't do RR five because we've said you need a fifty-foot exact right-of-way from your parcel to a primary, which is just not possible in most situations. So you can't do RR five either. What can you do? You can just keep it thirty-five acre parcel.
Tell them a hypothetical about you real quick. What if it were zoned RR five, but the slopes were too much and someone bought it and said, well, I can't build here because the slopes are too much? We've zoned it RR five, but the slopes, um.
Agree, I agree. And so, so that is a restriction. So there's a, do you lose, you, you lose density credit based on the slope or floodplain?
No, but I'm saying that the, it's not statutory, right? The slope thing. It's not something that the state of Virginia said, we've said this.
We have said.
Okay, but that's how I'm saying, how is that legally different? How is that, it's your taking and giving.
I think it's a, it's a measured reduction rather than a bar, I guess in my perspective.
I don't see it that way, but I maybe, like, I'm just saying, imagine that we did do that. And I say, oh, my bad, we didn't know everything was thirty-five percent slopes there. And sorry, you bought it. You can't build cliff-hanging concrete houses on it. I'm just wondering what's the difference there because in this, in a situation, somebody can do fifty feet. I mean, it might cost them a million dollars. They might have to go to every single person and say, hey, I'm going to put this road and I'm going to pay you two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do it. And then they'll say, okay, well, I'm going to satisfy this because I've got a bone to pick. There is a hurdle, but it's possible. I'm just asking, what is the difference between us having an ordinance that says, okay, you can do RR five, but then the slope thing takes it away from you? What's the difference legally between saying that and then, oh, but this one is different? That's my question.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a continuum and, and, you know, there's, there's, yeah, you have thirty-five acres that's flat eating dunes. And maybe there's state roads all the way around it. You don't need any interior roads, there's no floodplain. You get a hundred percent, you get near seven to there's slopes and there's floodplain or there's this and there's this continuum where I think there's reasonable and then there's unreasonable. And somewhere it's a gray band where I personally think you shift.
Well, with civil engineering, you could probably change some of the slope.
You could, retaining law and things like that, but, but you, you are similarly reducing their development right because of the character of the land as opposed to the character of the accessway. But not, not the type of road, just the right-of-way. I mean, they could go up and buy up all that and never improve the road. And what did that do?
So in this fix that you have, is there a reason that you chose to word it this way instead of moving fifty to another number?
I don't think you would ever say a number. You might say at least, but in our discussions, the right-of-way is inconsequential if you can't force the road to be improved for a by-right use, right? So it's, it's not the right-of-way that's important, it's the road. If you're worried about access to and from, it's the road. So it's a road capacity. So if anything, and you wanted to improve the road, then I would require some sort of engineering study to show that it's capable of serving X number of vehicles, which.
Instead of a wit, instead of a number, you just have some other principle. My question is back to Turkey Ridge. That was a good, is like, the, the concept being, what if all of a sudden there was board action where we say, yeah, you can put a hundred homes, whatever, fifteen homes back here, but we all know Turkey Ridge and the issues they have on that road.
Probably would not approve a rezoning for that. But if you did.
Crazier things have happened.
If you did, there'd likely be a proffer along the way that would show you that, that they're going to fix the road.
And that was part with the Mount Airy. I think there were no proffers, if I remember correctly.
There were some, but there weren't any having to do with access or, or the lot layout or connecting to two-eleven. I think if, if that applicant came forward and proffered a direct connection to two-eleven, it'd been a much different discussion.
Yep.
But they didn't because that's a very costly endeavor to have a bridge and a floodway right next to the highway.
So for fear of, it's ten-thirty and we have this last thing to talk about.
This shouldn't take very long.
No. So I, you know, I wasn't even thinking about having this on the agenda and Art said, hey, you know, do we, should we have something on the agenda about this? And I said, you know, it wouldn't hurt to have that discussion going. I have no intention to jam something through, but at the same time, I, we do think you should, you should do something. Because we strongly feel what's there is not appropriate.
I guess hindsight's twenty-twenty, but explain to me again why this letter, I think I asked this last time we met. Why did the, why did this letter have to go out to Mr. Brown on behalf of Mr. Taylor?
So we, we're compelled to respond.
Yeah, what's the, what's the time?
With the ninety days.
Okay, when did we get the letter?
September twentieth. So we didn't wait till the eighty-ninth day.
Okay, but what, like, how long did we wait? So, September twentieth and you sent it on November ninth? I'm not being critical, I just want to.
Yeah, we, after it was discussed, prepared and then discussed with the board.
Right, but I asked, I recall asking the question if we were in a rush and I don't really remember what the answer was. I just feel like it, it, it stakes out territory that, I mean, who's wagging what here? You know, it's like now we, now we have to contend with this, but this letter is out there. And it's, it's the opinion of the zoning administrator. But you're asking us to now somewhat on the back end revisit the ordinance language that has already been basically presented in the opinion of the zoning administrator as potentially invalid and unenforceable.
Right.
So I guess, again, hindsight being twenty-twenty, I wish, I guess, and what I'm saying is I wish that, I don't know, I, I know we discussed it. I definitely asked the question what the rush might be and what the required timeline was for issuing a response, but now it's, it's out there now. And so, I mean, we ultimately have to vote on any ordinance change.
Right, so I guess if you're thinking about.
We have this letter out there and it is like, how do I reconcile the two? What, as one member of our board, what if I come back and say, I think it is enforceable? I don't, it, I, I can't reach that conclusion at night. But in talking with Mr. Goff and talking with you and doing my own research, if I came back and majority of our board came back and said, we don't want to change it, with this letter being out there, that puts us in a bit of a pickle.
Well, I think you can, if the board felt strongly that way, the strongest term so that that could be done is to reaffirm the ordinance through the public process and say, I don't know what you guys are thinking about staff, but this is the ordinance we want. And by the way, we're going to do a public hearing and we're going to do it and it's going to be in there. And then there are consequences that may be good or bad that come out of that.
I might, I'd say more politely than that. I mean, it was polite enough, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it, you know, in an accusatory way at all. I just, it's a big, it seems like it's a big deal. And the fact that in trying to, I mean, this is the problem. We're talking about almost virtually, like virtually no legislative history that. We're talking about almost virtually, like virtually no legislative history that leads us to any kind of rationale. We can speculate like you, you did, and it might or might not be right, that this originated because of a one-off. And we now have it as ordinance language. Who knows? I don't know. But I, I guess at least I want to do my part to understand why it's there. And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing at all with you or Art. It's just I, I feel like we're, we're on our board sort of behind on this.
So there, I mean, there's certainly multiple ways this could have happened differently. And you could wait for a lawsuit to come. And so there are people that are directly, so, and so do we want to go through that and all, in that process? And so in this case, we chose not to do that.
Well, I'll note that our, our, our decision to deny the request for the rezoning of, of Mr. Taylor's property did not trigger appeal.
Correct. And I think part of that is, you know, okay, I tried to get RR2 and it won't let me do RR2, I'll do RR5.
Right.
And then he comes in to do RR5 and you say, oh no, you can't do that either.
I get that. Well, that's what, I mean, I get all of that. It's just, it's.
So I, I would encourage the board to be forward looking.
Trying to.
What, and, and so you might try to get in the minds of a board member of 1990, but I don't know that's constructive. You, you know your community. What is it that you, that you think needs to be in place as a prerequisite to allow non-ag and conservation parcels to be divided?
I get it.
And are there any, is there anything that is required beyond all the other things in the ordinance?
It boils down to this for me. If we don't have a place for small parcel development, we're going to keep seeing agricultural lots cut up. Taken out of agricultural production because we don't have any other place for them to do it.
The comp plan says you want it in the villages the way they're zoned.
But we don't like.
We say we don't want that. And so is, is there a prerequisite? Does the board think there's a prerequisite that should be in place before allowing somebody to subdivide a by right parcel? And Mr. Carney brought up a couple of them that are baked in that are, yeah, well, it depends on the slope and, and floodplain and things like that. The extent to which you can subdivide, there's still a lot of subdividing, but it might not get all the density you want. There's a reduction in your density. Not a, not a bar to subdividing, but there's a reduction in your density.
But you said it very well. So we can't put ourselves in the minds of a board member of 1990. And, and we should be thoughtful in thinking ahead. And to that end, I want to be thoughtful in thinking ahead. Therefore, I don't, I, I don't even, I, I am not comfortable putting forward anything for advertising, public hearing, et cetera today.
Yes, I think perfectly reasonable.
That's where I'm coming from.
And it's what I think you do need to begin to think about as a body. Should there be prerequisites and what should they be?
Yep.
Are they reasonable?
I, I know that sometimes I sound like, you know, a serial program. Because I say, when last we talked about this topic, last month in closed session? Which is, you know, where we left off last, our cliffhanger was. As I recall, staff said, we'll work on what we think will be acceptable language in the spirit of the way this was originally drawn up. And we will bring it to you. And I think that is an appropriate way still to proceed. But I think the language we have tonight is the exact opposite of what we had and it's too wide open. And so I think we need to rely on staff to say, what, these are the measures that you can have descriptive language about and, and set limits on. And see what we can come up with. Because that, that's where we left off to my mind. We didn't say, we can't do this, so we're going to open it up for everything. We said, we're going to revisit what we can do. And so that's what we need to do, not, not just set it aside and open it up entirely.
Yeah, I'm very comfortable not just moving to the next item in here and continuing this conversation. So as the board said, we can think about it and talk about it more and. Yeah.
I totally follow that.
Oh, I just meant.
Move into Mr. Frazier's.
Yeah, Mr. Frazier's.
You are comfortable moving into it?
I am comfortable.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought I heard you weren't comfortable.
We need to talk about this more as they both just said. And I totally agree, I'm not ready to move anything forward, so.
Right.
It is 10:30.
Sure, so as I noted earlier, another instance where the board in their wisdom in November of 2000 decided they should put the same wording in the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance. And that bit them later when, actually it was before 2000, that that happened. It bit them in November 2000 when they changed it in one place, but not the other.
Right.
So now you have differing language for family divisions.
I didn't know this until about 2016 when somebody told me that they were trying to do something and they said, but the, you know, at that time, the zoning administrator was someone different. And they told them they couldn't do it because they were looking at the language in the subdivision ordinance and not what we had changed in the zoning ordinance. So.
So I'm not sure which of the two versions the board wants today. But I would just argue that you do it in the subdivision ordinance because it's regarding subdivisions.
Right.
Now, the tie over to zoning is that the, you get an exemption from the density requirement, which is a zoning concept in the case of all ordinance, if you're doing a family division. And so there can be a simple reference to say the family transfer is exempted from density limitations contained in 170-37, provided it meets the requirements of 147-36. Rather than, basically it says that in the very beginning of the section now, but then it restates the entire subdivision section.
I, I think that to move this along, we can, if we could amend section 147-36B and use the language that we now currently have in 170-40A4. Where, you know, you can have, you can create more than one lot per calendar year if no one else is affected. And that, that was the only, only purpose of it is because some, you know, the, the two families, they had a 50 acre parcel. The parents or mother, the, the surviving spouse or whatever parent, cut her 50 acre parcel into two 25 acre lots, gave them to her two daughters. One sold hers, had no interest in keeping it. The other lived in the northern Virginia metro area for years, only came, paid her taxes, didn't come out here very often. And then she came out here one day to give her son a, a lot to build on and she wasn't allowed to. That's the exception in there that says if no other lot has this particular problem, the board can see fit to create a sixth lot. They did that so that they wouldn't be sued for what they already had allowed to happen. So that, that is the peculiarity of the sixth lot, which I didn't mention in my email this morning.
Yeah.
So that's in there to, that's one of those cover your backsides. So that allowed them to create this sixth lot, but in the process, they, they put that language in there that you can only do one family division per year. And the other parcels around you would then be notified so that I couldn't run down there and get four of them. And you're thinking, you know, when your kids get bigger, you're going to, and then all of a sudden, they're 18 and you can't do nothing because I got every one of them. And that's what that was in there for. But the problem is, we did it in the zoning ordinance and not the subdivision ordinance. And I, I have to agree with Mr. Curry here that strike the language as it's in the zoning ordinance, move it over into the subdivision ordinance. We send that in the form of a motion and a vote tonight back to the planning commission. Give them 120 days or whatever it is that they needed to look at it, it shouldn't take them long. They send it back after their public hearing. This board adopts it and it's finally clean after 20 years.
And as was brought to your attention during public comment, the state has dabbled in this a few times. And you might ask the planning commission to make sure that they check state code relative to family divisions at the same time.
I think that was a motion.
Do you want to repeat all that?
Very nice.
I can repeat it. I'll try, try it in English this time. I moved the board of supervisors tonight, sent to the planning commission the language that Mr. Curry has, has spelled out here that we amend 170-40 to say a family transfer exempted from density limitations contained in 170-37, provided that it meets the requirements of 147-36. Use the language that's currently in 170-40, move it over to 170, I mean, 147-36B. As, as it's spelled out here, with all the rubber.
And asking that the.
Commas and semicolons.
And ask the planning commissioner to review current state code.
Ask the planning commissioner to review a current state code as it relates to family transfers and try and have it back to this board within what's reasonable, 90 days?
90 days should work.
Promptly? No. 90 is good. Soon.
Getting punchy.
It's almost 11.
Immediately.
I mean.
All right, we have a motion, do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Do we have more discussion, just for like 17 or 18?
We have a motion and a second.
Someone wants to, let Mr. Frazier make a motion at 11 to extend the meeting. You want now?
No.
It's, you give you the privilege of your last meeting to extend the meeting past 11.
We don't need that much time.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, like I say, brought that forward a couple of times and it, it just didn't go anywhere, but maybe it's time.
I believe the next motion is all yours.
Yep, I think so.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Good for you.
Wow, you guys need to bring pillows.